in Newburgh, Oregon. We're here at the noon luncheon for the Shahealem Valley Chamber of Commerce and Newburgh City Club. If you go to our website, you're going to see some video that we're streaming right now of Heath McCormick, who is onstage. You'll be able to apologize for our listeners that were expecting music during the lunch hour today. We know we are not turning it into a news station, but times when there are important news events happening, we want the radio station to respond and to be able to cover those events. What we're having here is a candidates forum for two positions for Yamhill County Commissioner. And if you go to our website, you'll be able to see the candidates, most of them are here, getting ready to take their seat. It looks like we're about ready to begin. And we will be broadcasting this live on AM 1260 KLYC. And it looks like they're just about ready to begin. Glad you're with us today. This is KLYC, McMinnville, Newburgh.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the Yamhill County Commissioner Candidate Forum, put on normally by the Newburgh City Club and the Shahealem Valley Chamber of Commerce. To start, I'd like to welcome the Newburgh Graphic and Tutorial Board, and also point out KY-- or KLYC Radio is in the back. They are streaming live on the internet, audio and video, as well as broadcasting live over the radio. So just keep that in mind for any comments or... (laughter) My name's Heath McCormick. I'm a member of both organizations, and I will be moderator. Brian Doyle down there, also a member of both organizations, will be the timekeeper. The format will be each candidate gets two minutes to tell us who they are and why they want to be your commissioner. Then they'll have up to a minute and a half to respond to five or six questions, depending on... And the candidates portion will conclude with one minute closing statement. Members of both organizations have generated these questions for the candidates, and the candidates have also submitted written responses to five additional questions submitted by the Shahealem Valley Chamber of Commerce. Their responses have been printed out, and they will be on the table on your way out from our lunch this afternoon. Candidates, timekeeper Brian, will use a neon green card to indicate 15 seconds left, and then a red card will indicate your time is up. Please be courteous to the other candidates. Let's get started. So, starting with candidate Peralta, please tell us a little about yourself and why you want to be County Commissioner.
(inaudible)
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. So, my name is Sal Peralta. I'm running for County Commissioner, position one. By vocation, I am a marketing and technology consultant for Ward and Littering Bank, which is a parent company of the News Register. Before going to work for the News Register, I did primarily political consulting. I've employed as many as 100 people doing analysis work, so I have experience with what it means to be responsible for other people, but it could on the table and maybe payroll. I-- my passion and what I've done for most of my adult life has been to be involved in public policy and public service. The first job I had as a legislator was as a legislative aide in Colorado State Legislature. I have interned as a teenager for US Senator Toamore, and for most of the last six to eight years in the board, I have been an advocate for consumer protection, campaign finance reform, economic development, and government transparency in the state legislature, and worked on and helped to pass a debate, probably 20 million, in the last three or four sessions. And so that tells you a little bit about my background. What I believe in position is really simple. Yamhill County is losing two very experienced commissioners. People can have a lot of contact, both in Salem and the federal government. And we're also losing a state senator, Larry George, who was one of the most effective state legislators I've ever seen and worked with in terms of moving the policy agenda forward. And so I think we'll be really needing someone who has experience, but has this add in the board of the world in terms of building coalitions and moving the agenda forward. I'd like to do that for Yamhill County. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Stan Primzic, and it's great to be here today, and I want to thank the Chamber for having the Newburgh City Club for making this possible. I'd like to take time to introduce some very important people that are with me, my wife Janice, and Chris, and give that our scale my campaign candidacy, long time friend.
(inaudible) within the Navy for four years toward habitat in Vietnam, and worked in LST, Land Market. We do serve, I call it a large store target. We've been in the Navy a clerk for a basic company for 10 years, and is pretend division, off to small businesses in Arizona. I ran a seven years from the opportunity to join the pretend. I've been a financial advisor and professional for 31 years. My wife and I have seven children, thirteen grandchildren, and three daughters. And we've had a wonderful quality of life here in Yamhill County since coming here in 1984. And I want to see to it if that continues with generations. My volunteerism and my involvement in the community, 23 years as a school board member, I'm serving, currently serving, and also serving on the OSBA Board of Directors, and I serve as the Board of Director of CASLA Court Appointed Special Advocates. Running businesses, being a financial advisor, position...
(inaudible)
of our citizens and the beauty of our county. As the county grows, systems will become stressed, and budgets will become tight. My experience with growth and continuous improvement will prove to be invaluable as the county faces these growing pains. It is my plan to implement county-wide continuous improvement and quality management systems, streamline operations, and making them more efficient and ready to face the stresses of growth. One of my main focal points as Commissioner will also be synergy. We all know that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. As a county commissioner, I will make it my duty to facilitate the combined efforts of the 10 cities and the county at all levels. We have some fabulous parts here in Yamhill County, and I want to bring them together to make an even better whole.
Thank you, Attorney Russ. If I could ask you, please hold the applause. We do have a lot we need to get through, and I'd like to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you. Candidate Beach?
Hi, I'm Brett Beach. I've been in this county for a long time. My family is going on five generations here. I live here, I work here, I'm raising my family here. My wife and I are raising our two sons on our family farm, and what happens in Yamhill County matters to me. I've been active and involved in our community for going on 20 years. I was elected to the Newburgh City Council, served on a variety of committees. I learned good experience in the budget process, and I tackled many of the issues that are important to a small, growing community. As a Realtor in the county and local business owner for 25 years, I've learned what is important to people. I've worked with farmers and families, I've worked with businesses and vendors. I spent my career taking complex issues and breaking them down into workable solutions. I've helped find common ground between people with differing viewpoints. I've worked at coming together with governing agencies to make the best solutions possible, and I've negotiated agreements that work for everybody. As a business owner, I've managed a diverse array of people to bring projects together on budget and on time. All of these experiences and skills will be valuable as a county commissioner. I believe in careful and effective use of our taxpayer dollars. I believe that's vital, and that we can promote the caring culture of Yamhill County while still being fiscally responsible and preparing for the future at the same time. And as your county commissioner, I've worked for a county government that was based on responsible management, that promoted a healthy and strong economy and quality of life for everyone. I'm excited to work for you and the future of Yamhill County. Thank you.
And apparently we're having some trouble hearing people in the back, so they'd like us to use this. I'm just going to keep mixing it up about every two candidates, if that's okay? Go ahead, Kenny.
Yeah, my name is Bill Willis. I'm a country boy from the West Valley Hills. Can you hear? No?
(inaudible)
Test, test, test. Test, test, test. I don't think I'm lying, yeah. My name is Bill Willis, and I'm a good old country boy from the West Valley Hills. Many of you may not know that we have an area out in the West Valley that's part of Yamhill County, but the Willamina and Sheridan area, that's where I'm from. I'm a fifth generation resident of the county. My great-grandfather, Charles Morgan, came out to McMinnville by wagon train when he was five years old. And what I'm about, I'm about jobs, 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 and building our families. I'm a Christian. I attend-- I think you just lost me there. But I'm a Christian. I attend Church on the Hill in McMinnville. I've raised three boys, Nick, Jan, and Patrick. All of them grew up and attended George Fox University here in Newburgh. My son Nick, he's a professor here at George Fox now. My wife Jeannie, she's a dental assistant that works for Dr. Brooks in Willamina. But we've been in the county all of our lives. The Willis side of the family grew up up Gopher Valley. He's just turned right into Dairy Queen. And a little bit about me, I've been involved in forestry all of my life. I grew up and got a degree in forestry. I went to work for Hampton Mills, used to be called Willamina Lumber Company. And I've got 15 seconds left, so I've worked there a few years, and then went to work for the federal prison outside of Sheridan, and retired from there. And since my retirement, I've been involved in, and that's it for me. So, thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Willis.
The suspense is going to kill all of us that we had to drop you. So, I'm Deborah Bridges, and for the last 20 years, I've lived and worked and volunteered in Yamhill County, and my husband John and I are raising two wonderful girls. And I have to have a shout out to Newburgh High School Cheerleaders, who took first place in Nationals in California. Very excited. For the past nine years, I've been the Director of the Crime Victim Services Division, which is part of the District Attorney's Office. Advocating for crime victims has been an honor for me, but I feel that the time is now for me to take a leadership position within the county and advocate for the county as a whole. I think in the next four years, we're going to really be looking at things that our other candidates have talked about, transportation, land use issues. There's a lot of concern throughout the county about water and availability. But we're also, as a county, we're really responsible to our really vulnerable citizens, through the Veterans Department, the work we do there, through the District Attorney's Crime Victims Office, through mental health services that we provide in the county, and also the Juvenile Department and the work that we do with juveniles. So, while a lot of the candidates have been talking about some key issues that we see as a business community is really important, I'm also very, very concerned about how we're able to provide services to those who desperately need county services. I think that one of my strengths is bringing people together and working very collaboratively, and I plan to do that. My relationships that I have with the county elected officials, city officials, the department heads, and the employees of Yamhill County, for the last nine years, I've had great working relationships, and that is a big part of problem solving and how we work together. And I believe that that will be a strength that I will bring to this position, and I am passing that along. Thank you. I hope that you support me, and if you have any questions, I have some brochures out in front.
Thank you, Detective Bridges. Finish up.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to come into this candidate forum, to the City Club and also the Chamber of Commerce. My wife Kelly is in the back, in the peanut gallery back there, and if you see her bow tie, it's only because our daughter's expecting our first grandson. She did a gender reveal party, so we already know where we're at. So, we're excited about that. Kelly and I, and our family moved to Yamhill County, Dundee, in 1993, and I started working for Newburgh School District as a principal at the high school. And then in 2000, did like the Willis family and came over to George Fox as a professor in the School of Education. My role at George Fox is developing principal preparation, principal and superintendent preparation program. I started the program at George Fox, and then heading into my 14th year as a professor. I think as far as the reason why I decided to join this position-three race, is there's an immediate need that we have with Mary Stern announcing her move to Oregon County Associations, and that is an important idea, concept, that we have somebody ready to step in to fill her role and her shoes, if we can, in that position as early as May 27th, excuse me. So, I feel that having experience, recent experience in local government, I served on the Newburgh City Council from 2007 to 2012, and with that, as Brett Beach mentioned, a number of commissions and appointments. Yamhill County Commission on Children and Families, probably the primary one that I had, and had an opportunity to finish up that as Governor Kitzhauer transitioned that to the state. So, I'm looking forward to serving in position three.
Thank you. Candidate Stare.
Thank you to the City Club and to the Chamber, and appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Mary Stare, and I have lived in Yamhill County for over 20 years. I have a 40-year-old daughter, a 14-year-old granddaughter, and a 12-year-old grandson. My granddaughter went to George Fox. And a little bit about my background, graduated with honors from Emerson College in Boston, and then after that, for 25 years in network-affiliated television. I worked in stations from WTVB in Boston, all the way out here the last 17 years, at KATU in Portland. And a little bit of my background, news anchor and talk show host, investigative reporter, one of the things I'm most proud of is a series of reports I did on the story of rape of women inmates in the Oregon correctional system, which I'd love to talk more about, but I don't have the time. The other thing I've done is I've worked as-- put together a curriculum for the School of Integrated Media at Mount Hill Community College, taught there. I've worked for the Constitution Party. I'm certified as an EMT in three states, co-owner of a company with my husband. We had up to 80 employees at one time, and after the first two years, we had $5 million in sales. And that was an experience that really taught me a lot about budgeting, being able to make a decision on the best use of your employees and the best use of the money that you have available to you. I have been a principal in my own business, where I do writing and research and media relations for companies like Boston Scientific, or the Surgeon General's Office, Saving America's Youth, which is a child obesity project. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of national clients. Right now, at this particular point, I am on the Board of Christian Family Adoptions. I am a mentor for a child in Newburgh, a foster child, and I spend most of my time after school with her, chaperoning the dances at Newburgh High School, working with her. She has interfaced with the juvenile correction system. My whole effort is to basically keep one more kid out of the system here in Yamhill County. Thank you.
Thank you. So, now we're onto questions, and as a reminder, you have up to a minute and a half on the questions each, and again, we'll hold applause till we're done in closing remarks. Well, it's Charlie the guy holding mine. As a resident of Yamhill County, tell us what you've done to enhance the health and welfare of Yamhill County and its citizens. Please give specific examples within the past four years.
Enhance the health and welfare. I guess in the health and welfare department, I've been active in organizations such as Regulate for Life and the National Cancer Association. That's a health-related issue. I've been pretty active in the Boy Scouts, as my oldest son has just recently joined the Boy Scouts and attained his first-class rank. So, very active with the youth involved in that aspect. So, those are the health and welfare, I guess, recent activities that I can say that I was involved in. I would go as far to say that we have some very vulnerable populations in Yamhill County, and I would want to make sure that those are served, headed forward, in the future here.
Thank you. All right, Will? Or, Attorney Russ?
Oh, Russ, okay.
All right, okay.
So, the thing that I've done is I started the Dundee Community Clothes Closet with my wife. We actually started it at the Dundee Covenant Church, and we had a little issue with the landlord there, didn't like the church making money. Well, that didn't deter us. We kept going forward. And so now, it's a solid lease established in the Dundee Community Center, Women's Club, and we sell everything in there for a dollar. There's things that are brand-new with tags on them, things that have been barely used, and everything's sold for a dollar. And the money's going to help with the Women's Club and development of the Community Center. Unfortunately, since it's not in the church anymore, it's not going to the church. But it's definitely still helping to improve things in Dundee. I am also the Chair of the Tourism Committee in Dundee, and we're trying to there improve the business operations for everyone in Dundee. And actually, you know, I like to look beyond the county. Now, as a city committee, it's-- I mean, beyond the city. As a city committee, we're not really supposed to focus, but that's where I still believe that we can come together. And I want the different cities to have all their tourism committees combined with the county tourism committee, to raise the knowledge of everything that's going on with tourism, to expand our tourism base of the county, and bring in more tax funds for the county overall. So, I'll stop. Thank you.
Candidate Primzic.
Thank you. Could you repeat that question, please?
As a resident of Yamhill County, please tell us what you have done to enhance the health and welfare of Yamhill County and its citizens. Please give specific examples within the past four years.
Thank you. I was referencing the health and welfare of the county, and I wasn't certainly wanting to focus on individual people. I've worked very hard in this county to provide services to everybody, but primarily the youth of the county. As I mentioned earlier, 23 years on the McMinnville School Board has been very, very rewarding and very frustrating at times, but we have a wonderful school there, and that system has certainly improved the health of that community, Yamhill County, because many of our graduates are holding many positions within the county. I also serve on the State School Board Association, Board of Directors, and we have done tremendous amount of work in expanding. I represent Yamhill and Polk County in that position, and the work we do has been vital in bringing about changes to education that I think will not only help, but also reintroduce vocational-type programs to our youth, which are so sorely needed as we expand our economies. The one thing that I'm very proud of is my work as a board member of the CASLA, Court Appointed Special Advocates. They have a tremendous job to do, and they are the people who show up at every court appearance. Every time a youth who is part of the system, the court system, appears in court, there's an advocate there. And...
Thank you. Onto you, Sal.
Thanks, Steve.
Captain Peralta.
Thank you for the question. So, the most recent volunteers I've been involved with is would be Habitat for Humanity. This year, we've also helped put together the Discover Spring Farm with the benefit of the McMinnville Montessori, and the McMinnville Swim Club. If there's a common thread there, it's a lot of volunteerism around kids and helping our youth. Most of my volunteer activity, though, in general, has been focused on state public policy. So, for example, in 2009 and 2011, I worked on BiRome First, which was an effort to encourage the state, when they award contracts to businesses, to make sure that they give preference to Oregon-based companies when they award those contracts, so that keeps more of our tax dollars in the state of Oregon. We passed that in 2013. I have also worked on legislation to protect consumers from overbilling from insurance-- excuse me, from private utilities. So, if you live in an area where you have a privately-held utility, you get a percentage of your-- of your bill goes to pay the utility's taxes. However, there are many utilities in the state that don't actually pay state taxes, so what you end up with is an 8% windfall straight to the utility. Those are the kinds of things that I've really focused on. I've always been kind of a big, poor, public policy guy, and that's where my time has been primarily spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the organizations I'm involved in, the Women's Auxiliary of Newburgh Post 4015, the Women's Auxiliary of BFDU, my husband's veteran, my son, my son-in-law, who's now deployed to Kuwait. So it's important to me that we take a look at what the veterans are facing, they face higher rates of suicide, unemployment, and lots of medical issues. So they need to be aided in dealing, navigating through the legal system, which is extremely complex. I'm also a foster child mentor, and that is important to me because I have a child here. I have a 17-year-old girl in Newburgh who's living with a foster family with five other children. Her foster mother simply cannot take her to dances, cannot take her to all the things she wants to go to. She has unfortunately interfaced with the juvenile justice system, and I have been taking normal weekly, normal weekly visits to probation officer. She's had to do community service. I am very active with Youth Outreach, and fortunately, Youth Outreach is there for all the at-risk youth. So every day after school, this girl knows that she's going to see me, she's going to talk to me, she's going to wind up doing something fun, which we try to do several times a week. But I was asked recently to speak at Youth Outreach where they have a variety of people from the state agencies come to take a look at how their assessment of their organization. And she asked me to be there because she knows how important it is to me in my particular situation with my foster child. Also, the other things I'm involved in, I'm a member of Women of Willamette, who just gave four scholarships to four kids here in Yamhill County, and I'm proud of that. And I've got a whole bunch of things I can add on.
Thank you, Senator Starek. I think a big part of health and welfare is education, and for the last 20 years in Yamhill County, I've participated both as a leader within the school system, but also in my role at George Fox University and partnering with school districts around Yamhill County. I think what that looks like specifically is making sure that we provide the best quality education for our youth. And in that, then, they can go on and live healthy and promoting the general welfare, as we all have known from our beginnings in education, that's what it's all about. Along with that, I've had an opportunity to manage grants that have been solely for the purpose of improving leadership within our schools, both in my role at Newburgh High School and at George Fox University. I think another aspect of my work around health and welfare has been in the recent service on the Commission on Children and Families. And I am concerned, but also excited. I'm concerned that we still have the ability locally to direct those services for children and families. That's important. And I think it will happen, especially with the early learning hub that some of our leadership within the county is providing around that area. So it is both education and looking for those services that we can provide to our children and families. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going for really fast. So Habitat for Humanity, I'm approved. You don't have to have any skills to be a great volunteer. Newburgh School District. I work with crime victims throughout the county, I'm 24/7. I've responded to Clackamas Town Center shooting, I'm working with federal crime victims, but that's very work-related and specific. I staff the warming shelter, I'm a volunteer at Crater Elementary School, I'm on the mass casualty response team for the state of Oregon.
Again, this is Deborah Bridges.
I'm most recently out at Knight Court on Sheridan, which is a valuable program for kids to come out in the evening and hang out and have a lot of fun. My husband and I are committed to eating and drinking and shopping for charity, so we go to every auction in the, all the corners of the county. Really, because my job is 24/7 crisis response, I am engaged with a lot of the New York community responding to their crisis. And so I try to do other things in my free time that sort of build my capacity as well. And I love working with the kids at the school, I've gone on field trips, taken kids up to the federal courthouse. I do a book party for the book readers at Crater Elementary School, who put in extra time to be excellent readers, and those are things that I just try to do for my fun and enjoyment and just being a part of the community.
Thank you. Senator Wells.
This is Bill Willis.
Hi. Co-founded the Bulldog Math Club in Willamina. I was on the Board of Directors, I coached there. The Math Club is still very active and productive, and then I was on the Willamina School Board for eight years. Four years I was chairman of the board. But the program that I've been involved with that is nearest and dearest to my heart is for over 20 years, I've been involved in Bible Quizzing through the Free Methodist Churches. Most of that time was spent at the Willamina Free Methodist Church, where the kids memorize the Word of God, write Scripture on their hearts. These kids that I've been involved with have memorized most of the New Testament, and they compete in monthly quiz meets all over the Pacific Northwest, up in the Seattle area. And we yearly go to Nationals, which are held by Free Methodist Colleges all across the country. I've had many teams that have made it to the national finals in Bible Quizzing, and two teams that won the national championship. I've also been involved in planting, or helping to plant that program, in many of the churches around the Valley, including Newburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Wells, we'll start with you, if that's okay?
Start with me.
Next question.
Okay.
And again, remind you, please be respectful of the other candidates, keep it to our minute and a half. From your perspective, what do you feel is the most important issue facing the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners?
Well...
This is Bill Willis once again.
And I'm glad you asked. Over in the West Valley, we need jobs. We need commissioners that are willing to look at the entire county, including the area over around Willamina and Sheridan. In Willamina itself, we worked for three years to get a gas station in Willamina, and finally, we got a shale station in the Willamina area. And guess what is happening now, just months after we got that gas station? The Bank of America that we have, the only bank on that end of the county, is closing down and laying off all of its employees. And we have, as a community, have tried to approach First Federal to open up that bank, because really, that bank service is halfway to Tillman, halfway to the coast. And we need jobs. We need jobs in the West Valley, we need good jobs throughout the county, and these jobs are going to help strengthen the families of Yamhill County. And I believe that that is the most important thing. It's not the only thing. We have a lot of issues facing Yamhill County, and I support the commissioners that we've had, and they've done a very good job, and I commend them. But we need to have commissioners in there that are going to continue to be conservative in their approach, so that we don't have things happen like what is happening over in Polk County right now, where they can't even provide coverage of police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would pass it to Senator Bridges.
This is Deborah Bridges.
About jobs, but there's also a little bit that the county has been working on to be able to try and help with economic development, and that's the Grow Yamhill County program. And I think that the county commissioners will be looking to continue to work along that line. There's two funding streams to help with economic development, and a little piece of the lottery dollars that we get. I am particularly concerned as well about fiscal management, because we rely heavily on state and federal dollars that come into our county. We also rely on a limited tax base that we have, and that discretionary dollar is where we have the decision-making to be able to make decisions regarding some of the most important programs, law enforcement, keeping our public safety strong. And I think that PERS is certainly a challenge for us, working with the unions and making sure that we have a budget that's set and is strong. And I believe that historically, we've had very fiscally responsible and conservative commissioners, and I would be one of those as well. But we also need to have living wage jobs come into the county, because otherwise, we're just drawing on the resources that the county's providing for our rural population. So living wage jobs are an important component for the economic development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Mark Shelton.
From this perspective, it's not my position to say this is the number-one issue of Yamhill County. It's my position is to listen and find out what that is. And that doesn't just mean listening to other commissioners, it means listening to city leaders, elected officials, but also staff from those cities, but also from citizens of Yamhill County. That being said, I think, I like the fact that Deborah looked at this as a larger piece than just jobs, it's economic development. And I think what the commission can do is commit to being good partners, maintaining that partnership with the chambers of Congress. I think this Grow Yamhill County is an important initiative, but I think it can be done with an additional layer of cooperation and partnership with the cities, and the people really know about economic development. So I think taking some time to be part of the chambers, to be part of other groups around the county is an important way to listen and to take some direction on that. I do think that initially, as many counties around, at least the Portland Metro area, land use policies and that balance between agriculture, tourism, and manufacturing development is going to be a crucial first step.
Senator Mary Starek. Are extremely connected. You can't have economic development if you don't have fair, flexible land use decisions. And I think we face some challenges in this state, because we do have the most restrictive land use rules in the state, in the country. That being said, I think that we are in competition, not only with other states for business here, but with other counties. So how do we distinguish ourselves here in Yamhill County? I've lived in Moana County, and I've lived in Clackamas County, and I can tell you, there is a distinct difference here in Yamhill County. We have a very aggressive approach to land use laws and to building and to economic opportunity. With the $250,000 you get from the video lottery money, which is supposed to go to the economic development, we're going to have now a criteria, which will take a look, the commissioners are going to have to make decisions, in essence, be solemn and be very wise about who they give this money to. Having been in business, I'm going to be able to fill out this, look at the form of the business companies that have filled this out, and take a look and say, you know what? Either this is a good use of lottery dollars or it's not. I also believe we have a significant drug problem in this county. And the only way we're not going to arrest on the way out of drug problem, but we are going to nip it in the bud. And I do believe that programs like Mentorship, if I asked everybody here, if you would be willing to take 10 hours a week or 10 hours a month, we could keep one kid out of the juvenile corrections department. And without getting our kids into programs that are going to keep them safe, we're going to be in big trouble in this county.
Thank you. Brett, would you like to pick up?
Sure.
Senator Brett Bitch.
Look at, there's no one single problem in the county. You have a number of issues that are all tied together. If I had to pick maybe the top one, you could classify it underneath the heading of funding. Government funding is going to only get tighter in the future, and we have a myriad of services that we have to provide to our populations. So one of the things you have to look at is going ahead and ensuring that we have a fiscally responsible use of the taxpayer dollars that come in, continually striving for new efficiencies, new ways of doing things, in order to utilize those dollars as much as possible and stretch them as far as we can. We can do that also by leveraging those dollars, trying to find other ways and other funding sources we can put those with to get more bang for our buck, so to speak. Another component of that would certainly fall underneath the economic development. A rising tide floats all boats, so to speak. If we can bring new business in, generate new activity inside the county, that's going to help our funding sources, and that's going to help every business within the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my position that no single issue...
Senator David Russ.
We all care in this. And when I talk about growth management, it covers pretty much everything these other candidates have talked about. We need more jobs, and jobs will come with growth if we guide that growth properly and we bring the right businesses in with the right type of jobs to support our families and our county into the future. When I talk about growth, it talks about supporting our infrastructure and make sure we plan forward into making sure that infrastructure is right and can support the stresses it will see as this growth comes toward us. It is also talking about trying to manage that growth in a way that it doesn't overwhelm us. I mean, some people say, we won't have that, we don't want to hear. And I understand that one. I love the beauty I see out there and don't want a building in front of my view, but things will come. If you just put up a roadblock so that people won't go somewhere, that's not going to stop them, they're going to knock it down and drive around it. You need to set up another road for them to go down, a road that you want, that builds your prosperity and your future for your children. And that's what I hope to do, is to look at the growth and build that into the future that we all need. And that's the biggest thing that faces us, that it could also be our biggest asset moving into the future.
Thank you.
Yamhill County...
Senator Stan Primisic.
Are some of our greatest assets, and I think the county commissioners need to turn some of that loose. There's so many ideas and good plans that people have, and they really need to be empowered to go out and create jobs. We do need economic development in Yamhill County. As was alluded to just a minute ago, we also have very, very tight budgets. One of the things I did on the McMinnville School Board was I fought for and finally got a full-time grant writer on the board. That person, last year, we received almost $12 million in grant dollars that we have used to bolster the dollars we get from the state. We are, just like any other public entity, we survive off of those dollars that are granted by the state. We have to go out and find more dollars if we're going to continue to provide the services that our students need and our county needs. So there are a number of ways we can enhance the public coffers, there's a number of ways that we can enhance economic development in this county, and I won't leave a single stone unturned in finding those ways. I think we have one of the most fantastic counties in the world, and I want to see to it that it continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Sal Peralta.
I'd like to focus on the board. First, from Mark, who said that it's absolutely critical that elected leaders listen to the people. I've put together a little campaign newsletter that includes a public survey. I would invite anyone who wants to have a voice and influence in what happens in county politics to pick up a copy of this and send in the survey, and I'll make those results available to all the local media. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I agree with everyone on the board that has said that economic development and jobs are absolutely critical. We have 56% of the students in McMinnville Public Schools on pre-ambled produce lunch. In Newburgh, it's 34%. What that tells me is there are a lot of families whose parents are underemployed or unemployed, or who can't find a good job even though they have the skill set to do so, or they need better training. A goal without a plan of action is really just a fantasy. My plan of action as county commissioner is, number one, to take the two pots of money that we have, which include the video lottery dollars and also tipping fees at the River Ben and Landfill, and apply that to, first, to grow Yamhill County Plan, which I think is a really thoughtful approach, and second, to continue funding some of the travel and tourism. The second thing, and more importantly, is that that's only about $1.25 million. There's a substantial large amount of pot of money through the Strategic Investment Program, through the state of Oregon. Washington County's used it effectively, Marion County's used it effectively, and we should in Yamhill County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on to that. Question three. Completion of the bypass, Grow Yamhill County, and evidence-based decision-making are all major initiatives of Yamhill County. What are your top priorities for Yamhill County, and how do they align with the county's present initiatives? Well, I think I...
Well, I think I-
Canada Sal Peralta.
...but I want to talk a little bit about evidence-based decision-making. Actually, Deborah Bridges, I think, sits on the board of the Evidence-Based Decision-Making Program at the county, and she's a wonderful asset on this. But I was, I mentioned in my opening remarks that my first position out of college was as a legislative aide in the Colorado State Legislature. And I worked for a fellow who was named Sam McRae, who wanted to become Lieutenant Governor, and he was the Senate Minority Leader at the time. He was very interested in reducing recidivism rates, that's reducing the repeat offenses of crime. And I think that he would have loved what our county is doing with evidence-based decision-making interventions. Essentially, what they've done is, Yanhill County is a leader in this, a national leader, we're one of just a handful of counties that was selected to receive federal dollars to implement this program. And basically, what they've done is, they've recognized that at every single point that a person accesses our criminal corrections and public safety system, whether it's at the point of arrest, at the point of trial, at the point of incarceration, coming out of trial, that we have an opportunity to improve outcomes. And outcomes, in this context, is pro-social behaviors rather than anti-social behaviors, encouraging people to get steady jobs. If they have a drug addiction and need treatment help, to get the help that they need, we have an opportunity to do that in the county. We're taking the leadership role in it, and I'd like to see that continue, and I'd encourage everybody to be supportive of that program. Thank you.
Canada Stan Primisic.
That's a project that's been 25 years in the making, and it's still in its fledgling stage. The problem is that we're going to move an existing problem down the road if we don't correct one of the major flaws in the turnoff called the fish hook. And there is a design to fix that. Money is certainly an object, and about four weeks ago, TIGER 6, which is a funding program in Department of Transportation, became available, and we are approaching the federal government for those funds. That will pretty much take care of that fish hook problem if it's completed. $37 million to fix a problem, but it's only going to be compounded if we don't fix it before we get the project started. Economic growth is by far and away the most important thing facing us, simply because if we can create more jobs, we don't need to go out and find more money, it'll be here. We'll elevate our tax base simply by employing people. The unemployed people in our community aren't looking for a handout, they're looking for a job. We have to create those jobs. Government does not create jobs, government cannot sustain jobs, but we can certainly welcome jobs into our communities, and that's what we need to work on.
Canada David Russ.
Something that Sal said, we found out with the City of Dundee recently, that ODOT is actually in the phases of engineering a redesign of that fish hook. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it means that they're actually thinking it's possible. Anyway, moving on, you know, evidence-based decision-making is an excellent project, and it's the way to go. As a quality manager, that's the only kind of decision-making I make, is what is the evidence, what are the facts? You dig into the bottom of this, you find the root cause before you take action. And aligning with things that are going on in the county, again, that goes back to something else I said in my opening, kaizen, small steps. You start with what you have. You don't come in and take sweeping changes and try to make something different, you build on the basis that you have. And I think our county commissioner's done a fabulous job. I think we've got some fabulous things going on in this county, and that we need to build them, protect them, nurture them, and improve them, so that in future generations, we'll have them, and we'll have even better for our children and their children. You know, it's really an honor to be in this position, ready to step forward, so that I can help to improve systems, because, you know, as we've all said, that systems will be stressed, money will be tight. And it's only by streamlining systems and improving operations in every direction possible that we're going to make sure that our systems don't falter when it becomes important.
Canada Bret Bitch.
Initiative. Evidence-based decision-making is extraordinarily important in that it allows people both socially and fiscally to work their way back into productive citizens and whatnot. That's a common sense way of looking at it. We were a leader in that here in Yanhill County, and I would be very supportive of pushing that program further down the road. With regard to the bypass, there's been a lot of effort on that for a long, long time. We need to continue to keep the pressure to solve the issues that have been previously mentioned, but also to keep pressure on to see if we can continue funding for this. I would say the economic development aspect is the one that probably ranks highest. There are a lot of opportunities in the county here, a lot of large potential projects that could be looked into. In the West County, there's what's known as the Wallace Bridge Project. It's hung up on some federal issues now, but our legislators are working towards that, pressure being put at a local level that should continue. And there's SNCOR, which is Marion and Polk County, have been in for employee training and whatnot, we should continue to work with that as well. And thank you very much.
Canada Bill Willis.
I agree with what Spence said, but I look at things a little bit differently. I do believe that government should provide the infrastructure so that businesses can thrive throughout the county. The bypass project is vital to the businesses in this area in many ways. If you cannot get your goods and services to the I-5 corridor, you're not going to bring a business into Yanhill County. So that is, that project needs to be completed. But I also feel that we need to create an environment within the county so that the private sector can thrive, and let the private sector grow within the county, and not government. But there are things, he mentioned the Wallace Bridge Project, that's just one of them. The Wallace Bridge Project has kind of hit a dead end because of our red tape and bureaucracy, which was no problem at all when a federal prison, a government job, wanted to be put in out on that end of the county, in which we had two senators and a representative's support. All of that red tape just got taken out of the way. And the Wallace Bridge Project, which would have created 500 jobs out in the West Valley, has just hit one snag after another, after another. We need to clear out the red tape so that businesses can thrive. And if the private sector thrives in Yanhill County, it will provide the jobs that are needed. We're not going to grow our county through government, we're going to grow our county through the private sector. Thank you.
Canada Deborah Bridges.
Working for the county for the last nine years, and part of that is because we are seen throughout the state and nation as innovators. This evidence-based decision-making project, which I have, as Sal alluded to, three years, we've spent a lot of time digging deep into the criminal justice system with the design to have one less, have one less victim, have one less dollar spent, and have one less inmate. And it's been a long process, and why I'm excited that I'm a county commissioner candidate is because I will be bringing forward all of that, three years of work, and that knowledge base about that initiative, and the work that we've implemented there. If this is, I think this has gone out, I have a big voice, so I'm going to just tell you that-
It's working.
It's back on. I'm also excited about the growing Yanhill County, although it's interesting to me, because I really find that we're a partner, and we have the ability to bring people together to have conversations about economic development. But I do agree that it's not the county that is going to be creating jobs, that it's going to be creating an environment which Yanhill County can help businesses create jobs, but also be mindful about the livability of our community. I think we've all seen neighbors who we don't want to emulate. And as for the bypass, I've been on the, sitting on the Parkway Committee, and it's very exciting to see this going on. I know Larry Baum's act, years and years and years, always has talked about the bypass, and I wish he was alive to see it today. Thanks.
Canada Mark Shelton.
It requires not just setting up a program, but collecting data and using that data to make better decisions, continued decisions. So it's not just creating these programs, but looking at this evidence-based data that we collect, and I think balancing then, what the sheriffs are talking about, with our mental health needs, but also our public safety with that. So having the data to make good decisions. Obviously, it's a pilot program, we're not going to move anything a bit away from that, but I think it's important that we collect data and analyze that data for future decisions. In the other area, the bypass will be the number one, it's nice that it's moving off of the list. And I think what we need to consider is what Phase Two and Phase Three look like, before we get too far down the road. And again, it's collecting good data on the first phase, once it's up and running in 2016, to determine whether or not we really need to go over the hill and tie it into a transportation corridor that is not being supported by Sherwood, Tiger, or DeWaltton right now, in a completely different region than what we are in with ODOT. And I think finally, the Grow Yanhill County, I mentioned, it's one thing to set up a website, now it's important to collect the statistics for that website, and a city of developers are finding that next step that they go to. How do I move my assistance in that kind of-
Canada Mary Stewart.
Sounds like government doesn't, evidence-based decision-making. Well, you know that means for the rest of us, let's do what works. And I think that that sort of comes along with Hostile 3194, which I'm very excited to see, which basically says to the counties, "We're going to let you manage your dollars, we're going to let you manage your inmate situations, we're going to let you manage your criminal issues." And I think that's a really good start. I have a firm belief that we cannot arrest our way out of drug problems, we cannot arrest our way out of so many issues that are, we've got the highest number of people incarcerated in the western world in this country, and I think what we need to do is put people who need to be in jail or in prison, in prison, and we need to take the arrests of them and put them in treatment. And that's what this decision, that evidence-based decision-making is really all about, is let's take people who have mental health issues and not use our prisons or our jails as an asylum, and let's take off those who are dealing with addiction issues, and let's find what really works for them. Look at what teen challenges did. 67% of those who have gone through that program, which is a faith-based program, have not used and are unemployed every one year. That's what works. Now regarding the bypass, I think that when it comes to safety and to move afraid, we really do need to have that going on. And I think we're moving in the right direction, we've got some bumps in the road, so to speak. As far as economic development, I say we need more business people in government, less government and people's business, and that's the only way we're going to see that 14% rise in job growth, which the economic department of the State of Oregon is predicting. Thank you.
Thank you. Canada Stewart. What is the county's role in economic development, and what would you do to strengthen the county's economy?
Well, I-
Canada Mary Stewart.
...economic development, which again, just leaving to government to come up with eight syllables for one syllable word, which is jobs. Well, let's take a look at one case in point, which is CEC out in Sheridan, out in Bill's neck of the woods. CEC Construction Equipment Corporation was a company that owned land in DeWaltton, that based on the red tape that they were going to have to deal with in DeWaltton, they decided it was cheaper to move out to Yanhill County and to set up shop. They not only did that, but with some economic development money from the county, they were able to train and hire 20 people who were making some really decent money. Those are the kinds of things that government can facilitate. Again, government does not create jobs. What government does is make a not hostile environment for businesses to do business. So I believe that what we need to do is to get out of the way, we need to support our existing businesses, we need to retain those, and that means that I've gone around the county, and I've asked people from Little Miami all the way to Newark, business owners, what would it take to hire one more person? Think about that. If every business hired one more person, we'd take a huge bite out of our unemployment. Got a thousand people in the city of Newark who are either unemployed or looking for jobs. What we need to do is make it so that businesses are going to be able to prosper, and economic development at the county level really can work now that we have the criteria for two different streams of revenue to go to these businesses. Let's take projects like Wallace Bridge, and then the Comptoirs. Thank you.
Canada Mark Shelton.
Here, the government doesn't create anything, it will, because that's not the role of government. The government isn't the creator, it's a maintainer, if you will. You look for ways to convene, and I think you look for ways to support the work that the people are doing within Yanhill County, within the communities, that's a good thing. So the role of the commission becomes a convening role, more than economic development role, giving people the ability, a forum to share ideas, to share and partner together with each other. I think that's the role of the county commission. And then let the experts in the field develop the jobs, develop ways to make sure our schools are quality, and look for services that can offer to our people. I think that's the role of the county in economic development.
Canada Deborah Bridges.
I agree with, as well as that we're a convenier and a facilitator, a dialogue about jobs, but then also drawing in assets that maybe are available only through a government. We have great relationships in our county. You know, the Chambers of Commerce in Newburgh, in McMinnville, in the West Valley are very active, the downtown associations in both McMinnville and Newburgh are really strong, and they are doing the big heavy lifting about economic development. The Yanhill County Planning Department is seen as one of the best in the state, and they continue to help businesses with their planning needs. And it's sort of amazing, as I go around the state and I hear about the lack of cooperation within amongst counties, and people tell me, "Planning Department, your planning department is great." I didn't know. That's fantastic to hear. And so, I think that's what the county commissioners have to do, is create an environment in which we are pro-business, but I want to be very careful about livability issues as well. We don't want to become a burden. I think we need transportation to get goods in and goods out, but I think I want to be very cautious about how we're drawing from our water sources and what our county will look like in the next 10 years, and I think that's the role that the county commissioners have to play.
Canada Bill Willis.
Providing leadership and infrastructure for our private industry. And when I say provide leadership, there are several ways that it can be done. We can apply pressure on our state and federal leaders, and that's an example of what should have been done, more so, I'm not saying it wasn't done, but we could apply more pressure on those people up the stream in order to get projects like the Wallace Bridge Project through the red tape, to get the community support behind it, and to let people like Ron Wyden and our other leaders in state government, federal government, know that this is something that the community wants. Another area is to provide pressure to open up, open the timberlands back up that have been closed off, BLM lands, US Forest Service lands. But we can get together with our local governments and find the areas that they have in their communities that would work out as good sites for business, and we could provide incentives in those areas for our businesses to come in and start up. Those are things that we can do as a local government. Thank you.
Canada Bret Bitch.
Act as a facilitator for promoting business throughout the county. There are a number of things that can be done. The Grow Oregon Program, kind of holistic approach, the Grow Yanhill County Program, a holistic approach to involving everyone in that process. We can also look at a number of the niche markets that we have. There's a lot of small businesses that have come into our communities through some of the tourism and whatnot that has come in. There's a specialty pork producer in Dundee. There are a lot of small products, there are retail products that are being made by good small businesses here in town. We need to support those businesses. I think the county is in a position where it could help utilize the talents and skills of a number of the leaders we have inside the county, to have an incubator program or an accelerator program for small businesses. We could go ahead and help promote the larger businesses as well. CEC was a good example of what can be done in the West Valley. They came into this community because the land was affordable and the conditions were right, and I think we can be part of that.
Canada David Russ.
I think one of the biggest things we can do to spur economic development is bringing the great minds of our business people in our cities together so that they work together, not only just in individual cities, but all of them, all 10 cities and the county. And as a county commissioner, would be a position to be the facilitator in that, because we know, like I said, synergy. We build better together, and our great minds will build phenomenal things together. Grow Yan Hill is a great thing. Right now, with the Precision Bar Miesco Expo Company, that is drawing worldwide attention to our county. And that's something else that the county can do, is find things like that to turn heads to Yan Hill County. That will draw businesses here and draw more money here. That can also lead to the next step of my process, which is increasing tourism. Tourism can be the biggest memory maker for businesses and the county. And any county is proven all over the place, so that's the way that works, this is things and that. So bolstering tourism in the county is something I'd really like to see. We've done great things with our tourism committee in Dundee, but I see that we could have done so much more if we had shared resources with all the cities of the county and had support from the county in that process to help us bring all that together and make a bigger thing for all of us.
Candidate Stan Permitz.
And there are a number of things they can do to facilitate businesses coming here. But mostly, we have to create the atmosphere that says, "We want business." But we can monitor the types of business we attract, and we can then make it, we can incentivize businesses to come here. County commissioners have the ability to offer incentives to bring people in here with good family wage jobs. We've been talking about evidence-based decision-making, that's what, we in the school district started this a long time ago, it was called Data Grift Decision Making. And again, as Mary pointed out, we can have a lot of things that we call it, but it's doing what works. And we can do a lot of things that work, and we've seen a lot of things working. CEC's been mentioned a couple of times. That worked because we knew what was available in Sheridan, that they had a facility there where Liberty Homes was. They came down, they looked at it, said, "God, we can put this together in a matter of months instead of the two years it would take to get through developing their own property." We can use Grow Yan Hill County in a way that will really attract people to our county. Thank you.
Candidate Sal Peralta.
So we've had every candidate up here discuss economic development, and I agree with many of the points that are made. Just speaking specifically to one of the points that I made earlier, using the Rural SIPS Program, Strategic Investment Program, through the state to recruit new businesses. Basically what this is, it's an incentive for businesses to locate their companies here in Oregon. And we need commissioners who are familiar not only with that program, but a dozen others that are available to us that we have not been available ourselves with the county. Other counties are very good at it, we haven't been. But anybody who talks about economic development and doesn't first touch the issue of education probably doesn't have as great a grasp on economic development as they, as they might want from an experienced commissioner. We have, we're in a situation where the first question that employers ask usually is not, "What's my tax liability going to be in Yan Hill County versus Clackamas County?" The first question is, "Where am I going to get my workers?" And right now, in K through 12 education, most of the money that is spent goes towards college prep, which is fabulous. I'm highly supportive of that. However, most of the jobs that graduates will take coming out of schools in McMinville, Newburgh, or the rest of the county are not college jobs. So we need to improve vocational training. We need a county commission that is laser-focused on improving vocational training opportunities in our school. One example of that in Billings Neck of the Woods is the Little Minot School Bond. They're going to improve their metal shop, and I have to stop now, but thank you.
Thank you. And it's like a time, we're going to move forward a little bit, we're going to start with our closing. You've got one minute each.
So it occurs to me that I am probably one of the more cognacious people up here, and I attribute that to a lot of caffeine this morning before I came in, I was a little nervous. But really, we are at a crossroads in this county. We are losing two very experienced commissioners. We've already, we're going to lose an incredibly talented state senator. And what we need is a county commission where the people sitting on the board are ready to hit the ground running, ready to not just talk about job creation, but actually go out and do it, who have the relationships both in state government and in federal government to take advantage of those kinds of programs so that we leverage existing county dollars with other pots of money and other resources. I have spent several years working with a lot of local businesses in Yan Hill County, large and small. A deck's been in a company that I've done work with, in terms of trying to help them promote themselves. I have a lot of relationships both inside the county and outside the county, and I think I am a, I appreciate the vote for commissioner. Thank you very much.
Well, I misunderstood, I thought we were going to have two minutes to wrap up, so I'm going to have to really make this quick. I bring to the table a wealth of experience in decision-making, a wealth of experience in budgeting.
Candidate Stan Permitz.
On the board of two entities that have multimillion-dollar budgets. I understand the necessity for budgeting with your means, but I also understand the necessity of getting the biggest bang for your buck. My 31 years of financial advising has made me well aware of being fiscally responsible, and that's one of the things I will certainly do. Education, Sal pointed out, working with our community colleges, working with our schools to provide that workforce is critical. And we're already in the process of doing that with CTE, bringing back vocational programs, bringing back computer programs that will help us to develop that work base. So thank you very much.
As a county commissioner, I have a positive outlook.
Candidate David Russ.
Making positive solutions and making decisions based on return investment, not only for today, but for our children and their children's children. Sometimes what you see today may not appear to be as good as you might want it, but it will make the future so much better overall. I support the cities. As a city councillor, I know what those people do, sit in those councils, and I know what the county can do to be better support to them, and I want to be a part of that. I'm looking to improve, like I said, and streamline things, because just seeking to change this or that is not going to be the solution. You need continuous improvement. And the people in the trenches know what's going on. People that work the jobs know how to solve things better. And we seek them out and find the ways to make their jobs easier and save money for the county. I love this county, and the amount of time anybody's been anywhere or knows something has nothing to do with love. I met my wife, it was love at first sight. 20 years later, I still love at first sight, every morning. And so it really doesn't make a difference. Some people might vote that I haven't been here very long, but that won't make a difference. I vote based on what's good for all of us. Thank you.
Candidate Brett Bitch.
He's ahead of us, there's a bright future. There's a lot of issues as well that we might have to overcome, and I certainly don't have all the answers. I can tell you, though, that I'm certainly willing to ask the hard questions, bring ideas to the table, work with people, listen with everyone. I don't know that there is anyone that will work harder or is more committed to our county than I would be. So I would humbly ask for you to support me as your next county commissioner. Thank you.
Candidate Bill Willis.
Understand the unintended consequences of the decisions that will be made, so we don't, three, four years down the road, when things go from good to bad, we no longer have the funding in order to provide the services to our, the citizens within the county. We need to grow our government, we, not our, excuse me, take that back. We need to grow, we need to grow our private sector, and we need to learn to live within our means with the money that comes in. And government funding for certain programs may be nice, it may look good, but that funding ultimately goes away at some point in time, and then we're stuck with the unintended consequences. So we need to be conservative. We've had a conservative approach by our commissioners. I want that to continue within our county. I want to be able to live within our means and grow our county from the private sector, not from government funding. Thank you.
Candidate Deborah Bridges.
Vote for me in position one, and here's why. Or position three, sorry. I have, for the last 20 years, been very invested in Yan Hill County. You can vote for me in position one, too. I do cover two spots, that, effective. And I really think that local leadership requires local experience, and I bring that to the table. I have, the last nine years, been working diligently at the county level. And, you know, it's sort of disheartening to hear, you know, get government out of our business when what we do for people is really important. And I am thinking about the mental health patients who definitely need our services and the families who need that support. I think of the veterans who need our services, I think the crime victims who need our services. These are not people who are out doing that 24/7. And we do have drug problems, and we have a really involved criminal justice system that looks at those problems. But we have a lot of other issues that we face as a county. And I, a county commissioner, could walk that, through that door when Mary Stern leaves, and I could take up where she has left off. And there are a lot of hope to be done, and I'm very excited, and I think I would make a great, great county commissioner in either position.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to participate in this forum today. I appreciate the opportunity.
Candidate Mark Shelton.
Here, we like to couch as a political race, an election, whatever we call it, a primary for determining who will stand in the general election. But I want to take the emphasis off of a campaign and put it more into an opportunity to share ideas that we've cooperatively shared today here at the table of leadership and less about politics. As my colleague mentioned, local experience is important, and I believe that. I have recent experience in local government, and I think I understand governmental budgets, they are different than business, they are different than educational budgets. I also believe that I have recent experience in working with schools around the county, looking for partnerships with PCC and CCC with our seven school districts, and that's an important experience that I bring to the table. Thank you.
Candidate Mary Sterrett.
I think that the functions of government must be priority. There are needs and there are wants. There are things that we would love to do. We would love to have so many more recreational opportunities here. We'd like to have so many more livability issues presented to us here. But the bottom line is we have limited resources, so we need to prioritize our money. And I try to think about the fact that there are people who are sitting down to write their property tax checks, and for some people, that is a stretch. And we're going to see more and more of that now that we're dealing with the, with the effects of the Affordable Care Act. We're going to see a lot more people who are going to be coming to the county as a result of needing help in that. We're going to see a reduction in jobs as a result of that. And so I think the core functions of government need to take into account that some people are going to be really struggling, some people have been struggling. And I believe it's important for us to get out of the way to allow business and private enterprise to do what they do best, and I think it's time for us to get to work. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank you all for being here today and making time to share a little more about yourselves. And for all of you up there, thank you for being engaged and being part of the future of our community. In the same vein, I'd also like to let you know that there is another opportunity for community engagement, and it's the future of the Newburgh Downtown. The Downtown Transformation Workshop will be this Saturday, April 5th, at 11 o'clock in the Evans Elementary School cafeteria. This is your chance as Ellen Newburgh Downtown Coalition, what you would like to see in the downtown Newburgh area after bypassed the rest of the truck drivers around us. And please be sure to pick up the candidate's letter, Cheryl's got it right there, the candidate's responses to the questions, I think, and on your way out. And lastly, don't forget to vote on the ballot. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
David Adams, you've been listening to a live candidate forum here in Newburgh, and thank you very much for your patience in listening to it. I know we have been without music for a considerable amount of time here, more than an hour. This broadcast was coming to you live from Friendsview Main Campus in Newburgh. And now back to our regular scheduled programming here on AM 1260 KLYC, providing you information you need to know as you live in Yan Hill County.